Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood Planning Board. We are live here at the Norwood Senior Center and online. It being 7:00 and time to start. The first matter on tonight's agenda is a continued public hearing regarding proposed zoning amendments, particularly related to accessory dwelling units or ADUs. And this is continued from our public meeting on February 12, 2024. So I know where we left it last time. I'm not sure if Sarah had given her introductory speed, you know, piece, but I think it's now board discussion time? Oh, there's Sarah right there, so Sarah can pick up. Hi.
Good evening. Yep, so I had already introduced the text of the bylaw, and that was more or less when we ran out of time for discussion. We did receive one comment from, two comments from the public, one from Attorney Hearn, and one from a resident who spoke in favor of the ADUs.
We also received a comment from another resident, Rachel Churchill, as well, which was put in board members' packets.
Great. Did you, did the board get a chance to review that? It said there was an email. Oh, all right. So, Sarah, is there anything more from the planning department with regard to this, or can we move to the board's questions and concerns? Because I see Debbie's got her hand up.
Sure. So the only follow-up item that we left off with at the last meeting, there was a question about whether or not it might be appropriate to impose some sort of limitation on the number of bedrooms that would be allowable for an accessory dwelling unit. Again, we didn't really have a long time for the board to kind of deliberate on that, but I did follow up with some research on it. I spoke with the building commissioner regarding this, and he was very, you know, he confirmed building code does specify minimum requirements for bedrooms, you know, depending on the situation and the structure. My recommendation would be not to prescribe any sort of requirements for bedroom sizes, seeing as we already have a limitation on the overall size and the impact it has to the exterior of the property. I'm also concerned that if you created some sort of a limitation on bedroom size, that could have the adverse impact of excluding families with children or larger-sized families, which there's a legal obligation not to do that with our land use policies. So I would recommend against doing that, but that was the follow-up conversation that I had with the commissioner about the building code.
All right. And the reminder, I think, just for all of our benefit, is that the maximum size of one of these things is 900 feet, 900 square feet?
900 square feet or one-half of the primary dwelling structure, whichever is smaller.
Whichever is smaller. All right, so it's only...
So the maximum it could ever be would be 900 square feet.
Understood. All right. So with that, does the board have any questions or comments, given what we discussed last meeting and then into Sarah's comments today?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Debbie, you did have your hand up at the beginning. Yes, Debbie Holmwood.
I think there's a number of questions. I'm concerned that if we don't put something in regarding bedrooms, that people are going to think this is just adding on, I mean, four bedrooms, everybody keeps bouncing around. 900 square feet isn't that big, and we do need to get this through town meeting. And I think if we don't put something in regarding bedrooms, it's not, it feels like 900 square feet and four bedrooms might be an issue with town meeting. It kind of feels like there's too many ways to abuse it, and I think it's important to be specific. They do have to come to us for a permit, right?
Yes. Oh, no, excuse me, it's by right.
It's by right, okay.
Just a building permit.
So...
I'm sorry, Debbie, but in terms of the building permit, there's still other mechanisms, but from a planning board, it's a by right.
Okay. So if they come in and say they just want to do four bedrooms, no bathroom, is that okay?
Well, I'm not sure by definition that would be considered an accessory dwelling unit. That would just be an addition.
That would be my question.
Well, then it's...
An ADU is an independent living unit with kitchen, like cooking facilities, bathroom facilities, and living quarters.
Okay.
And that's how the bylaw defines it, and that's consistent with building code.
And to put those two items in, I just think it's important, if you want this to go through at town meeting, to have some guidelines. And I think two bedrooms in a 900-square-foot accessory dwelling unit makes more sense. And again, it's got a, it's one of the many things that's got to go through town meeting. And like you said last, or two weeks ago, Sarah, the comments that you got were regarding not changing the flavor of the single-family zoning areas, single-family neighborhoods, correct?
Was one of the goals of the bylaw as it's written, yeah.
So I would respectfully ask that we talk about making it a limit to two bedrooms, kitchen, bathroom. And we do have in there compatible with the style of the house, not my words, yours, right?
It wasn't voted on any recommended floor amendments. Right now, there's no language in there that would speak to any sort of design standards, although that is something that was discussed. I know you and I have discussed that, Debbie, and briefly mentioned last time when the public hearing opened before the board. But if that's something you're interested in doing, the board should talk about that.
Okay. Then we have some discussion, board, on just making it compatible to the existing structure.
Well, I think you bring up, there's two things that you wanted to discuss. First, I'd ask, does anybody in the board have any thoughts about limiting the number of bedrooms or allowing 900 square feet to carry the day? Ernie?
I respectfully disagree with Mrs. Holmwood. I think that the building inspector is fine with the 900 square feet or smaller. I think that once we start getting inside, we're going beyond our jurisdiction, and I think that's a building inspector question. I think that everyone's circumstances could be different when it comes to the use of this, so I don't think that we should limit it. I think that the, we've given in the overall scope the 900 square feet of the smaller, but as far as internally, I don't think that we should be creating more restrictions than maybe is beyond us, and leave that to the building inspector when he signs off on the plans. I agree with you, Mrs. Holmwood, on the making it, the looking of it. We would, I would suggest that we request that someone makes it look like it belongs there, part of their house, and I would think most people would want to do that. My question would be, how do you enforce that? Who is the police here that designates that it works or it doesn't work? And we've had this discussion on many different things over the years. You know, we're not the, we're not the paint police. We don't tell someone on their property what color they paint their house. It's not a historic district. We can request it, but I don't think putting it in there, how, how do you, what's the enforcement policy? Who's the enforcement officer? Who makes the decision that, well, that looks good, but yeah, I'm not really loving that? And I don't think that we can impose that on somebody's private property. So just my thought. I mean, if you can tell me how you can enforce it and not be the paint police, then I'll listen.
Well, I don't, how we can enforce it, visual compatibility, as ambiguous as it is, gives the owner some guidelines, I think.
We could put it in there, we request it, and you talk ambiguous, you always want to eliminate ambiguity, that word. And I don't think that you can, we can request it, but I don't think that you can put it in the bylaw as, you know, because who's the, who's going to decide? The building inspector is going to decide?
Yes, we discussed having a design standards for 20 years, which we have not got, but visual compatibility, I think, is, I know I say I don't like ambiguity, but I think there's some standard to that. So we can't put it in the bylaw?
I think you can request it, but you would like to see it that way, but I don't think that you could enforce it. I mean, who's, I mean, again, I go back to who's the enforcement officer going to, who's the paint police here?
Well, we don't have Gary Adams, correct?
Joe?
Well, just for an example, if you, if you had a brick house and they were to add on, I've seen some where they, it may be difficult to make the whole structure brick if you're just adding on, and they may just be like any other house, which is usually wood or vinyl on the siding. And I don't know who would make a decision on something like that, say, no, no, you have to have brick, just like the side of the house or the front of the house, or the, like Nantucket or something. I understand where you're coming from, and I think that is, it's the best direction to go, and, but you do kind of think that people who are doing these things would do the right thing also. I guess you could make a suggestion or request it as Ernie has suggested.
But if requesting, where do they request, which we're not asking for, they don't have to, if they could do it by right, so we don't have to do it with a permit. So whenever we're requesting that they make it visually compatible if we don't put it in here?
Then take then, don't put it in at all. I mean, unless you're going to have an enforcement, a bylaw that has to, you have to have, every bylaw has to be enforced by whatever authority is the enforcing officer of that particular bylaw. And if this one is unenforceable, then just don't put it in. Why are we adding words to the bylaw? That's just my opinion.
Well, if we put in visual compatible with the style of the home, that's too, that's, you don't think our building inspector could enforce that?
I don't know. I don't think so.
For what, Eric? I did have a conversation with the building commissioner about this suggestion, and he also expressed similar, you know, thoughts to Ernie, kind of saying, it's not something I could enforce.
Does anybody else on the board have any comments?
Sure. Debbie, I think it's a nice idea, but I tend to agree with Ernie. If you're, if you're meeting the building code, you can, you can have different types of finishes on the outside of the building, and that's really, I think, what, what the building commissioner can enforce, whether or not it meets code in that way. But I don't know, like Ernie said, I don't know how to enforce visual aesthetics.
And we get back to, we need a design standards in town, and again, I think this is going to come up at town meeting when, because I think this is going to be one of those that gets a lot of attention. And the more we can be specific with it and make people comfortable with it, it's not going to be just something that's put on the houses, and it's going to have a lot of bedrooms and extra cars parked in neighborhoods. I think that could be an issue to get it through town meeting, but that's, that's all I got to say. Can't get any...
Derek.
Okay.
Yeah, hi. To go in with the number of bedrooms, I think it also goes in with a question that David Hearn had submitted. Should the proposed bylaw limit the number of occupants on an ADU? That goes in with the bedrooms. You know, so if you say two bedrooms, well, you're limiting that occupancy, all right? And I don't think you should limit that. You know, your, as was mentioned before, you're coming within the unit itself, dictating the plan and so forth. The comment with the visual compatibility, that's all interpretation, what that is. And why limit, you know, one's taste doesn't apply to someone else's.
From my part, I agree with Ernie and everybody really. As far as the external appearance of the house, I don't know how you legislate, you know, good taste or how people should do it. There, as Joe said, there's, there's a such thing as a brick house that could have a very attractive addition or appendage of some other materials, so I'm not sure who would enforce the appearance or what the preferred appearance would be. And I do agree that there's other applicable town provisions as to how the internal layout of a house should be, the size of a bedroom. I mean, if you're going to squeeze five bedrooms in a 900-square-foot ADU, I'm not sure that would be permissible under the current scheme, so I kind of agree with the rest you can say.
Would that be permissible under the current scheme if they wanted five bedrooms?
I would be shocked if that amount of square footage would accommodate that amount of bedrooms, but that's a question for the building inspector.
Because it's not, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
It's not just bedrooms that are going to be there. You're going to have to have a kitchen and a bathroom and a living room, and I...
And external entry.
And an entry, and I don't know what, how much room you got left after that for many bedrooms.
Sure.
I think you'd be lucky to have two.
So this is a public meeting continued, so if there's anybody in the, out here online that wishes to speak, any comments in the back? Name and address, please.
Rachel Churchill, 145 My Law.
And you had sent an email to the board?
Yeah, I sent those emails, so just this morning, because I'm not as on top of your meetings as you are. But I'm in support of ADUs. I think they're a really important aspect to provide flexibility for homeowners. You know, I provided some detailed comments from a detail-oriented person, really to just increase clarity and do some cleanups. You know, if we have defined terms, we should use them, we should use them consistently, not have internal inconsistencies either within this section or with other defined terms in Section 11 of the bylaw, those kinds of things. Just two points to raise in the public comment period relate to a tension that I'm noticing in the statement of the intent and purpose of ADUs in the section, the proposed Section 8.2.1, and the very last provision in the section. So I'm fully on board and completely support the stated purposes and intents of ADUs. One of those is that it provides homeowner's flexibilities for their properties, but actually the last section prohibits any ownership requirement of either the principal or the accessory unit, so it could be a completely owner-unoccupied for both units. I'm less concerned about the outcome there, because there's good arguments on both sides. I just, because I noticed the inconsistency between that provision and the stated purpose, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was like a specifically discussed and deliberated provision, because there are good, good reasons on both sides, whether to require owner occupancy or not on either the principal or the accessory unit. And then the other comment that I saw, a little bit of tension in the stated purpose, was to increase housing stock options within the town, but there also is no limitation within the provision about the tenancy duration. So it would be permissible under the last provision of this proposed bylaw for short-term rentals, which seems inconsistent with the intent of increasing housing stock in town, because obviously if you have someone who's renting for a period of less than 30 days, which, you know, is the standard, you know, tenancy at will, month-to-month type of tenancy, you're really going to have more short-term people who are really not there looking for housing as their residence, but more transient, you know, overnight, short-term period accommodation. Again, not necessarily a problem, as long as it's the intent, but those two provisions in particular, I just saw some tension with the stated intents and purposes, so I just wanted to present that for your consideration. And of course, if you had any questions or comments on my markup, I'm available at any time. But I really appreciate the opportunity to support ADUs in town, and I really appreciate your effort in putting a really good provision in at town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernie, well, I guess we'll take note of the comments, and we can discuss. Attorney Hearn, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
What Ms. Churchill just said raises an interesting point about the question of short-term rentals, and I don't think that was the intent of this, and I support the intent of this. But I do think that, from the point of view of this political point of view, in terms of getting it through town meeting, the idea that there's no real definition or limitation on the number of bedrooms or occupants is going to cause concern among some of the town meeting members. The, and my comments, you know, some of them are editorial, some of them, as Ms. Churchill, I think, as lawyers, we write, try to make things, try to clarify things, and that's part of what I offered in my comments today, so that we reduce lawsuits by making things more clear. I do think the issue about visual compatibility is something that you could do. We already have it in the bylaw. It's a requirement, having to do with special permits, so there's a way to decide it. And if you don't like the results you get from a zoning board or a planning board, you can appeal it. Well, if we put it in the hands of the building commissioner, and you're trying to add on to your house, and he says, well, it's not, you know, this is not visually compatible with what's here, and I don't mean it's got to be exact. I mean, my house has a brick front in part, and I've got a side porch, it hasn't got a lick of brick in it. But, you know, some people could add something on that just looks horrible in the neighborhood. And I think people in the neighborhood have a right to expect that things will be done in a way that fits in with the neighborhood. So we already have visual compatibility. If the building inspector was charged with that responsibility, and I don't mean to load him up with more things, but he has a lot of responsibility, a lot of discretion. If people didn't like it, they could appeal his decision to the zoning board, that's under the zoning act anyway, that they could do that. So I don't know that, that there is no way to enforce this, and we already enforce it on other things in terms of visual compatibility. I was concerned about the language on the parking, that we're limiting these to one parking space, or is that the intention, to limit to one additional parking space for an ADU? What if people have two cars? Where are they going to put them? And while I know some members of the board have expressed a concern about there not being enough parking, but also at the same time trying to preserve green space, this is something you've got to balance. Otherwise, the way this is written potentially could lead to people having, several people living in a small section added on to a house, and change the character of our single-family and even some of the two-family neighborhoods, because you're allowing somebody to add another unit and turn a single-family house into effectively a two-family house. And that's not what the zoning says. If we, I think we have an opportunity here to allow the flexibility, but because it's not required that we do this, at least not yet, I think we have an opportunity to say to folks, you want it, it's got to be small, we're going to limit the number of occupants, we're going to limit the number of bedrooms, and we're going to have some rules about visual compatibility. Otherwise, you're leaving it wide open, and it could have a very detrimental effect on neighborhoods. So, you know, my thoughts are offered because I support this, and I want to see it get through town meeting. And I think as it is, there will be a lot of doubt about what this is going to mean and whether people will vote for it, and you need a two-thirds vote, I believe, on this one, because it's not affordable.
Thank you very much for your comment. Before we, I guess, discuss the board, is there any other comments from, Mr. Plasko?
Good evening, Phil Plasko, 507 Hattie Street. I have a bunch of concerns, but I'm only going to address two tonight. One is, part of the, what I've read has been that we want to make sure we don't change the character of the neighborhoods, but if you go to, I think it's, what does it estimate, the most restrictive? That single-family home. You start putting in these secondary buildings, they're turning those all into two families. So now you've taken that single-family neighborhood, a lot of people bought their homes in those neighborhoods for specifically that reason, and now you're suddenly going to put apartments in their neighborhoods. I'm not quite sure that's right. Just to answer the question, 900 square feet is more than enough for four bedrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from online or from the room? Sarah, name and address, please.
Cabaland, Janette, 12 Mustover Parkway. I'm a licensed contractor, licensed insurance contractor, and I did many additions, and I work usually, most of my businesses are on residential. Just to answer for Debbie and the rest of the concern about the look on the outside, if you look in any addition done in the town, 99.99% it matched the house. If you have white vinyl siding, your addition is going to have white vinyl siding. If you have cedar shingles, you're going to install cedar shingles. If you have vinyl siding windows or vinyl windows, you're going to install vinyl windows. All those like concern about the look on the outside, I'm actually questioning what would be if it's not matching the house? Because that's still our house. We want it to look as best shape it can be. We still live there, or most of the time, we're going to be living there as well. And if we happen that, we rented it, now the family lives there, you want the best people to live next to you. You're not going to rent it just to bring, to inherit to the place and give you headache all the time. So I feel like we are stretching the worries about that much stuff, especially the construction aspect over on the outside, because I don't see it changing the look of the neighborhood, because when you do addition on your house, or renovate your house, or any addition that you go in the town, the house still looks the same. I don't see it look like a farm, or look like something that really does not belong to the area. And about the number of the bedroom, 900 square feet, not going to allow you to put 10 bedrooms right there. That's not a common sense. Plus, there is a minimum size by code for a bedroom. You cannot just go five feet by five feet and call it a bedroom and throw like nine bedrooms right there. It's not going to happen. Plus, you need hallways, you need a little kitchen, you need a bathroom, you need to pour a shower right there, any family. So I feel like we are going sideways with the explanation and the details about how much that space can be used. And like Ernie said, leave it for the people, how they want to use their own home. I'm sorry, my house belongs to me, it does not belong to my neighbor. I respect my neighbor, I care about him, I love them, but I'm paying half a million dollars for my house to live in it myself and make it fit best way for my family, not how my neighbors are concerned about how I live in my house. So I appreciate your help with that.
Thank you for your comments. Joe?
I just have a question for you. You're the builder, so how many, how many bedrooms could you fit in if you did, and you had a kitchen? What, 900 square feet? What do you think this thing would look like?
If you squeeze it, squeeze it hardly, and you make it 70 square feet a bedroom, which is the legal smallest size, seven by 10 feet, plus closet, you'll be lucky if you fit three bedrooms right there, with the family room and kitchenette and the bathroom and a hall.
All right.
Actually, we can have a closet as a bedroom.
I'm sorry.
It's not New York City where you have a closet as a bedroom.
No, no.
It's code enforcement for that sort of...
Especially like with families in this day, like my kids, like they have like 100 square feet bedroom, and they tell me, my desk, my school stuff, my bed and bedside table, I need at least 120 square feet.
Sure.
So if you add this to a house that you live in it, you're not going to crumble it. I don't, plus, like, most Harrow Street, it's already divided, like those raised ranch, you're not adding to the house most of the time. If I end up in a house, myself and my wife, living in that big, like 2,000 square feet home, I can close the door and rent it downstairs. I'm not adding it. I'm not changing the look of the house on the outside. All I have to do is like add a kitchen. Bathroom is already there. So it's not only worrying about it as like a worst-case scenario extreme. I have 1,000 square feet right there right now, including like a garage in it, so it's going to be like 800 square feet. I can put a two-bedroom, family room, kitchenette, and a bathroom. All Harrow subdivisions right there match that criteria without changing any look on the house.
You, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
You stated the minimum size of a bedroom is how many?
Seven by 10 feet to put one bed.
So that's 700 square feet.
Plus a closet.
Square feet. 700 square feet?
No, 70 by, 7 by 10. 7 feet by 10 feet, so 70 square feet.
70, sorry.
70 square feet plus closet and like little entrance to that, this can kill 100 square feet by itself. So family room to put two couches and a TV right there, you need like 200, 300 square feet.
Then you...
A bathroom, another 50, 60 square feet, and like an entrance, especially if the way you have the door walking on the side to... Especially if the way you have the door walking on the side of the door does not come to the front, that's going to take some space, not only that...
It can't come through the front.
Yeah, but you creating more work. Like if that side door is going to go to the backyard, you're going to create a pathway from that to the driveway. You're creating more work paving stuff like that, which is, I'm sorry, I feel like really it's stretching for that. If we try to help people use the best they hope, we are creating more work, more cost for something unneeded.
All right, so a lot of, thank you, sir, very much. I appreciate your comments. So Sarah, if we could unpack a couple of these things, and there were great points raised. I really, a lot of stuff that I don't think had even been talked about to this point. Let's talk about the short-term rentals. Is there anybody in here that knows whether or not there's a restriction on like Airbnbs in this town? I can rent my house Airbnb, you could, anybody could, right? Any apartment. So that short-term rental thing is, I think, uncharted territory in terms of regulations in the town of Norwood. Is that correct?
Yeah, and there's some good points made. You know, there's definitely considerations for short-term rentals. A lot of communities in Massachusetts have taken advantage of some specific language that the state allows you to restrict on short-term rental use. I would say that if that's something that the board is concerned about, then we should have a conversation about what that would look like town-wide. I don't know that I, at this time, would restrict it just to our conversation on ADUs. Anecdotally, if you go on Airbnb right now, there's less than 10 offerings in Norwood town-wide, and they're not all apartments, some are single-family homes. So I don't know that it's a problem at present that's running out of control, that, you know, will explode if we don't address it at the moment. But certainly, if, you know, you find some of this compelling, then we absolutely can and should talk about it town-wide soon.
So Sarah, if I could ask this, about the parking, which was brought up. Nothing in this would permit a second curb cut into a lot, right?
No, so there's a requirement that you have to, unless you live within a half-mile of a train station, that you do have to include, you know, one additional parking space. But that's not a maximum, you know, that's a minimum requirement.
But that's within the existing arrangement? They wouldn't allow to, you're not allowed to cut another driveway into the property?
We don't address curb cuts at all here.
Okay, fair enough.
So that would be between the homeowner and DPW.
All right. Any other comments on what you heard, or?
Yeah, I took a couple of notes, just to kind of, to go through those questions. The introductory statement that Ms. Churchill had asked about. So I don't necessarily see that language as contradictory with a lack of owner occupancy. I think it's fair to say that the residential use can meet a homeowner's need even without occupancy, if it's a caregiver potentially living in that unit, or if it's being rented out for income to support the homeowner. I think those can be considered homeowner needs that are addressed with the flexibility offered in the ADU bylaw as written. So I didn't necessarily see it as, you know, contradictory with the owner occupancy, but that was just kind of my perspective on that point. And then as far as, you know, the design language goes, I had worked with Debbie to draft some language. I think that it is challenging to enforce, but Attorney Hearn makes a good point. You know, if this were to be challenged, certainly there are appeal avenues for determination of the building commissioner before the ZDI. So, you know, it's, I think you could include language in the bylaw encouraging design that's visually compatible. It's not ideal, but it's not without precedent in the bylaw, and the appeal process is there. So I can send over that language in the chat if you'd like to review that.
Debbie, you had a question or thought?
Yes, and I had a good thought. If, since this is not, if we're, if somebody were to build a new house, do they go with the guidelines of, in our bylaws, of how many bedrooms, you need that many cars? So if they're building, if it's not in the MBTA community and they're building a two- or three-bedroom units, we, there has to be three cars, three parking spots, right?
So this would, yeah, this would require one additional to what's there already.
For four bedrooms, it would only require one additional parking spot?
For the ADU.
Based on what's there?
Based on what's where?
The existing dwelling unit, the existing structure. The parcel that the ADU is being constructed on.
But if we're adding four more bedrooms, how does that tie in with our zoning bylaws? That if you add, if you're putting up a new structure and you have four bedrooms, you have to have so many parking spots, right? Right?
I don't have the bylaw in front of me on that one. I, perhaps somebody in there has left.
Yes.
And I'm, again...
One, two bedrooms, three, two spots.
When the gentleman spoke, I completely appreciate that he wants to do what he wants to do with his house. When he's not there anymore, and let's say, you know, we aren't going to live forever, and if somebody owns that house and rents it out to do two different people, and then we've got parking issues or occupancy issues. I'm just trying to look a little ahead down the road and be as succinct as we can. And it seems to me that we should think about, if we've got four bedrooms and we've got four adult children, that, which is great, they, you can help out the family, but maybe they're going to have three cars. And where are they going to go? They're going to be on the neighbors, in front of the neighbor's house. And right now, all the neighbors get along, but let's, let's think about this so they're not, not getting along. Well, I don't have the bylaw in front of me either, but I was under the understanding, if we were building a three-unit, three-bedroom unit, we have to have two and a half cars, unless it's in the MBTA overlay district.
I think Attorney Hearn might have some, did you want to say something?
If I can, Mr. Chairman, if factually. If you have a single-family house with two or more bedrooms, you need three parking spaces. If you have a two-family house with each unit having two or more bedrooms, you would need six parking spaces. So adding one, I think what Ms. Holwood is getting at, is adding one more space for an ADU that it can have two, three, or four bedrooms. Kind of treats these differently from people who have, say, a two-family house in terms of the parking requirements.
Doesn't that cater to the specific needs that this is intended to address? Like an elderly parent, or a...
But you've got to go beyond that.
Yeah.
This is why I think this is a concern.
You've got to go beyond that.
And I'll answer the question, I have other comments, but I mean...
Sure, well, I'll let Ernie elaborate on what he was saying, and then, did you...
No, I think this is, I think the, you know, my, I struggled with this whole thing from the beginning. The intent is good. You know, an elderly parent, a, somebody who has to move back home for whatever the circumstances. There are million circumstances within families, why somebody who needs to come home and have this. You bring in elderly parents, they go on, they move on to a nursing home, and now you have this unit, which now you can rent. And this is where I think it, and my concerns from the beginning was to, I think somebody made the point of not making this a two-family home. You know, and those are my, I think the intent is there. I think the, the second step is, once the elderly parents move on to a nursing home, and now you start renting it, I think this is where the, where the muck is.
Right.
And trying to, trying to solve that. I would like to ask, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask Attorney Hearn a question on something he brought up. When you said on the zone, on a mechanism to challenge the building inspectors... So if this is by right, and I'm being dumb here, if this is by right, and the building inspector signs off on a set of plans for this, at what point would the neighbor know that, what it's going to look like? And at what point would he be able to challenge the building inspectors? I mean, do you follow me?
I do, I wasn't even thinking about neighbors.
Or somebody.
Let's say you want to build an addition, and the building inspector does have the say on this, giving the building commissioner the say under the proposed bylaw. And let's say, and he says, "That's not visually compatible if you put that requirement in," which I think has been suggested very good. So let's say you have that requirement, and you're, Ernie Peskowsky comes in, he wants to add on to his house, and he's going to build something that doesn't, most people would say is not compatible. Might stick out like a sore thumb in the neighborhood. The building inspector says, "I'm sorry, Ernie, I'm not going to give you the permit." Well, I don't like your determination. So you appeal his decision to the zoning board. That's part of what the zoning board does, on decisions of the building commissioner.
Yeah, you said, I follow you. I was thinking of an outside, like a neighbor that didn't, that didn't agree with the look.
There were a couple of sorts of... One minute, sorry.
I would just like to call on that.
The... Well, let Ernie finish, then, yeah.
So I mean, I think that there were some, I think there's some, you know, good points here tonight. And, you know, my, my whole thing on this thing was the second step. What happens after the elderly parents go to the...
After the initial need passes.
After the initial need, and then now what do you, now you've got a renter in there, and it, and this is where I've... You know, I know that Gary is, is in favor of this and, and feels it's the, it's the right way to go. So I'm still, I hate to tell you this, but I'm still, until I, we talk about it and see a current, you know, a bylaw that we all agree on, you know, I'd like to see it in paper again, once we hash some of these things out.
All right, just because there's a few more comments, let's start with Ms. Churchill.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, because all the conversation that I'm hearing and the input is reinforcing the assumption that I've had, that that last clause is intended to allow the homeowner, the individuals who own and reside in the home, will have access to the accessory dwelling unit for anyone, a family member, a caretaker, a nanny, an income stream from an unrelated person if someone is sitting on a lot of equity, but they don't want to liquidate their house. And I think that's all perfectly appropriate, to not require both units to be owner-occupied. But the last clause actually prohibits the requirement that either the principal or the accessory unit be owner-occupied. And all the language that I'm hearing is talking about the homeowner, the homeowner, the elderly parents, the caregivers. It would be, I think, perfectly consistent and appropriate if the homeowner elected to occupy the accessory unit, maybe older empty nesters who want their adult children, kids, to occupy the larger unit. I think that would be perfectly appropriate. But I would suggest consideration to having an owner occupancy requirement of either the principal or the accessory unit, because that is consistent with all the interpretations and language that I've been hearing. And maybe it's a false impression, but it would be good to be very clear one way or the other, especially when the stated intent at the beginning talks about flexibility for homeowners, where this language would permit an absent landlord to independently rent both the primary and the accessory unit, and that it's really not accessory, it's just a smaller second apartment. Thank you.
Sure, all right. I'm sorry, ma'am, you haven't been heard yet, so name and address, please.
My name is Trish Monahan, I live at 24 Railroad Ave.
Yep.
And I just have a question, and then maybe a comment. So when you say ADU, does that mean it's going to be an in-law apartment?
It's, you could, what most people, a lot of people would refer to as an in-law apartment?
Yeah.
So like a separate, fully functional living space that's attached to a, a single-family residence?
Right, so I went to look into adding an in-law apartment onto my house for my elderly mother to move into. And at the time, I was told when the time came that she wasn't living there anymore, I could not rent it. That it had to be a family member, I could not charge rent if they contributed to, like, say they ran the electricity off of my electric cable, cable off of my cable bill, the electricity off of my meter, however that would go. They could consider contributing to that cost, but I couldn't charge them rent. So that seems to, if it's going to be an in-law apartment, then the pamphlet that the building department gave me at the time said I couldn't rent it once she wasn't living there anymore, unless it was to a family member.
Okay.
Because only a family member could have been there.
There's some town enforcement issues in there that, how long ago was that, if you don't mind me asking?
Um, probably six, seven years ago.
Climate taken, there's so much that's come up, and I think I agree with Ernie that I think there's some dust in the air on this one that we have to figure out. With regard to, Sarah, where would we stand on this particular discussion?
You mean for owner occupancy?
No, just, well, as far as this proposed bylaw...
Owner occupancy as well.
Well, owner occupancy, the Michael, maybe Attorney Hearn can speak to this. I don't know how that's enforceable in perpetuity. Maybe, maybe it is, or whatever. There's some strange ownership mechanisms, like if the house is owned by a trust. I, I don't know how you can, you know, a bylaw would control the...
They're not legally advisable. That's the feedback that I've gotten, you know, from town council and even working in other municipalities before this. It's shaky ground for a town to enforce occupancy. We don't do it for single-family homes, we don't do it for two-family homes. We, we really don't regulate that for, for any type of residential setting. And to start with ADUs, again, that's not consistent. But also, again, you know, if we think a design standard is unenforceable, then owner occupancy for units is wholly unenforceable. It's a, it's a challenging thing to do. Other communities, you know, elsewhere have tried to create regulations that require, you know, some sort of family relationship to whomever is residing in there, and that's even worse. I mean, that puts, you know, local government staff in charge of figuring out who's related to who. It's just, that's a nightmare. So, you know, also, it's important to remember, you know, kind of backing up here, and I think to Ms. Monahan's point. The goal of this ADU bylaw is not to introduce a brand-new concept to the community. It's to create clarity in what has previously been a gray area. Our current zoning bylaw is silent on ADUs. And as a result, these have been constructed all over town for many years without the kind of regulations that we're trying to enforce here, which seek to provide some glare, you know, guidance and clarity, to regulate the design, to make sure that when they are constructed from here on out, that they're safe, that they have safe egress, that they don't change the character of the single-family, you know, zoning districts where they're located, where the doors are on the rear of the property, and, you know, they're not paving over the entire front yard, you know, for a million cars. It's really, these guidelines are trying to preserve these goals, not necessarily work against them. So I think it's important to remember, like, that's the, that's the intention, but they're not new to Norwood. They're, they're all over town and have been constructed for a long time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Debbie, go ahead.
I, I understand what you're saying, Sarah, and I think the problem is that it's, on the, on the face of it, it's a good idea, get more clarity to an in-law apartment. However, you can't, you can no more tell them who they can rent to, or that it has to be owner-occupied. And, you know, how many bedrooms? If we give you some guidelines, I'm just, everybody's not always going to live. You know, we're not always going to put mom and dad into the old people unit and use the other one. On its face, it's a, it's a good idea. I think we are not being, I think we're not looking ahead of the way this could be abused. Not in, abuse is the wrong word. I think we're not giving people enough guidelines, and isn't it our job to be as concerned about when you don't live there anymore, and you sell the house to Sam and Joe Smith, and, "I've got a two-family here. I've got an apartment with a separate entrance with three or four bedrooms, a bathroom and a kitchen, and why can't I rent that to offset the cost of my mortgage?" And now we don't have place, I think it's our responsibilities as a board to make it as clear as possible that we're adding something new, that it, everything's going to get abused. And nobody in that room is going to do anything bad, I understand. Everybody's got the best of intentions, but I think we need to be more definitive on how we... This is, this is a big deal to me. So I, I think we have to be more specific. You know, you can't, you can't say they can't, they have to owner-occupy it. You can't, are we going to go with the parking restrictions that we have in our zoning book? So if it's four more bedrooms, don't we have to have three more parking spots? I mean, if it's a three-bedroom house, there's supposed to be... I mean, if it's a three-bedroom house, there's supposed to be, now we've got a seven-bedroom house? You know, I'm not, I'm not just trying to be the deadbeat downer, I'm trying to look ahead when we are all sitting here and we're turning this over to the next people that have to deal with it. And I think it's important to be more clear about this. I don't think, I don't think the cake's done yet. I don't think the cake's been close to being done.
Holly, do you have a comment?
I have a comment.
Yes.
And I very rarely do this, but I'd like to speak to the board as a resident, as a younger resident of Norwood. I live at 51 Concord Ave. And when I started working in Norwood, I commuted to Norwood for more than a year from Worcester, Massachusetts, more than an hour each way, because there's a severe housing shortage in this region. I was living with five roommates in Worcester, and my salary as a town employee was not high enough to allow me to live anywhere closer to Norwood than maybe Potucket, maybe I live now in a three-bedroom condo, it's 1,300 square feet. You could get rid of one dining room and the bedroom and still be 250 feet over that 900 square feet. So I'm having trouble envisioning these four bedrooms and 900 square feet. And I have one car in that unit, but I would just like to advocate for people in positions like me, young professionals, single or not, who really, you know, unless your parents are in Norwood, it's so difficult to move here. And even as we're writing these zoning bylaws, like the MBTA Communities Bylaw, new apartments like that are, we know what the market rates are, they're still, even the affordable units are hardly accessible to someone in those shoes like, like I am. And the ADUs offer a type of flexibility in housing choice to people like myself, young professionals. I say young, as I have all this white hair, but...
Younger than Joe.
Yeah, I'm a Joe, so I've got that. Because to the point of the gentleman who spoke earlier, they tend to be more affordable because homeowners are looking for, for people that they want to have in their home, right? You have to have a certain amount of trust in people. And typically, right, whether you're regulating ownership or not, it's not going to be professional landlords who are, who are renting these, these units with, with management companies who are used to having to evict people and all of that. So you're, you're going to try and make things work for the right person to have in your home. I say that also as someone who had a home in Worcester, where I, like, I lived with lots of roommates, and we had an ADU in that Victorian house, that we rented for $1,000 a month, a one-bedroom unit. And that's still what the rent is, and it's, it was, this hasn't changed since 2017, because we really cared who lived there and cared about that person. And I know people in that situation in Norwood. I know someone who lives in an ADU in Norwood, who has lived there for almost 20 years, and her rent hasn't changed. She's an elderly woman who contributes a lot to the town, and contributes a lot to the family that she, she shares a home with. So I, I just want the board to consider the ramifications, the potential benefit of these units for all kinds, people in all, all sorts of walks of life, as you, as you make your deliberations tonight.
All right, thank you.
Amazing.
All right, Sarah, name and address, please, I know you're together, but for the record.
George Holmsey. I reside at 24 Coach Lane.
Oh, you're not together, no, I'm sorry.
No, we're fine.
Yeah, name and address again, if you would.
Yeah, George Holmsey.
Yeah.
I reside at 24 Coach Lane.
Yeah.
I basically lived in Norwood my entire life, was born in West Roxbury, but my family moved here when I was 11 months old. And my family owns three single families in the same neighborhood where I live, and actually where I live is the house that I grew up in. And now I'm living there, my parents live at 60 Milpon Lane, and we own the house right across the street, 19 Coach Lane, and rent it out at the moment. And I don't see myself leaving Norwood, I think I'm going to be one of those statistics of, and the Guinness World Records of, you know, the town that has the most people that lived in Norwood, left and came back and died in Norwood. So I hope that I can do that, too. To Holly's point, as a young professional as well, on a very different side of the scale, I'm very, very blessed, my family, and I was able to provide things that for most people can't. And I think that, as Holly mentioned, that this is something that would take care of a lot of issues for my generation and the younger generation with the excruciating cost of living and so forth. And that I think a lot of good points came about, and that there's some things that need to be somewhat ironed out. And I don't think that requiring that it be a homeowner occupied type of thing, where as long as it can be enforced by law, I think that on its own would take care of a lot of things, because, for example, the single family across the street, we've had the same family that's lived there since 2008, when my family bought it. And we're very particular of who's going to live there, because my family and I were living in the house together before, you know, years ago, before my parents bought the house at 60 Milpon. And so that alone would resolve a lot of issues that, the concern is, because if you live in the house, you're going to be very careful of who you're going to want to be living within walking distance of where you live. And similarly to what William was saying in terms of the finishes and so forth, I think also the same thing, that you as a homeowner, especially in the day and age now where it's costing a fortune to buy a house, are going to want to make sure you preserve how that looks, because you have to look at the long-term effect of your decision that you're making. And so you're not going to put something that looks completely hideous and ridiculous and attach it to your home, because you're going to affect the value of your house for the long term. And as Holly mentioned as well, with the parking situation, I wonder, when the bylaws were made in terms of the requirement of three per, for every two bedrooms, was it three? When was that bylaw created? Because that has changed a lot, in terms of the need for vehicles and, you know, with Uber and so many different types of transportation, that maybe that needs to be reviewed when the decision is finally made for how many parking spaces you really need for a 900-square-foot unit, where, as Holly mentioned and as William, the reality is, based on the requirements, you can only fit so many bedrooms in there. If you squeeze in and had the most amazing architect and engineer to create a way where you have the maximum number of bedrooms, I don't think you could squeeze in one of three. So that's only the points I want to address, and thank you, the board, for deliberating and taking it very seriously that we make a good decision, because it is something that has long-term effects and very soon.
All right, thank you.
Brian, do you have anybody online?
Yeah, do we see, Holly, is there anybody that's waiting to comment online?
Nobody's raising their hand online.
Okay.
Yeah, Ernie, go ahead. You know, this thing, some really great points have been brought up tonight, and, you know, things that I've been thinking about. And I'm just going to ask, and I'll ask Mr. Chairman and Sarah and Holly to weigh in. I think that the, I think that we need the bylaw. I think we need to clean up the bylaw, the gray area that was there before. The building inspector has asked for it, this would be helpful to him. But there are some areas, and I think, you know, we're going to do that, but there are some issues that I don't know if we can hash out tonight on the fly. And I don't know if this is appropriate or not. I would like to get it right, I would like to talk to Gary again and get his feedback on some of these issues that came up. Talk about them, you know, go over the bylaw again, check off what we all agree on, and then talk about what we don't. Sarah, so we have a meeting March 4th, right? I think is the next one? And...
Yeah.
I don't know if, by March 4th, if we can get this done. How, how much of a hassle here would it be to withdraw and put this on the March, I mean, on the, on the May town meeting? If we, is there a, I mean, we're talking another month and a half, and then we can really look at everybody's comments and really look at them and, and come up with a real consensus? Because I think it's important, and I think it's a great idea, but there are a lot of areas...
Sure, so, you know, I think we have been trying to structure town meetings so that land use is in March.
I understand that, yeah.
Late the annual for budget and CPC-type articles, capital being in the fall. It's not to say that we can't do that, but it is kind of a priority to try to push it that way.
Well, I don't want to use the word push, that's...
The warrant, the warrant article, you know, it's already final, so any changes that are made, whether it's within the next week or the next month, all go before town meeting and a floor amendment on March 21st. So if there are specific, you know, follow-up items or research points where, you know, Holly and I can support your questions, gather information, you know, get the building commissioner to weigh in on. Right now, we have a mostly clear agenda for March 4th, so we do have a lot of time to be able to discuss. And Holly and I are committed to making sure you have the answers you need. So to the extent that this is already on, on the warrant, and we do have about a month, I would encourage you to try to get, you know, as close to final as you can with this language.
Then, then I think we could probably do it in that time. But, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a, make a motion that we continue to March 4th, and we work with Sarah and Holly and the building inspector to go over, because there are a lot of good, a lot of good points tonight. And, and we do want to make it, you know, there's parking, there's owner occupancy, I mean, I think we want to make this consistent with the rest of the town, as you stated earlier. Sarah, that we're not trying to recreate a wheel here, we're trying to clean up a gray area and, you know, work with the building inspector and come up with some consensus for some of these, because I think there were some really good points brought up tonight. And I think, like, in my own mind, I had some concerns about, you know, I think the intent is there, and I think the thing, but, you know, these, as the lawyers in the room will tell you, you know, there's, all these things can, can hit you, and you want to have shields for as many of these as you can. So I would like to make a recommend, make a motion that we continue the public hearing to March 4th, we work with the building department and the zoning department, and come up with some consensus on some of these outstanding issues.
So continue on March 4th at 7:00 P.M.?
That's...
All right, motion to second, it's a roll call, because Debbie's not here.
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie Pachakowski, aye.
Debbie Homewood, yes.
Okay, thank you. So this matter will be continued on March 4th at 7:00 P.M., and we will revisit. All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is a site, signed site plan review for 499 Washington Street, the mobile gas station, replacement of a canopy sign. Is there anybody here to present on this one, this evening?
Yes, sir, this is Jason Dawson with Total Image Solutions, on behalf of the owner.
Yes, I'm sorry, could you repeat your name, sir?
Jason Dawson with Total Image Solutions.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. So what we're asking for is just a basic upgrade of the gas canopy. It would be a like-for-like change with what's existing. Currently, there's a mobile logo that's on the gas canopy, we'd just be replacing it with a new mobile logo. I think that was the, the item that was in question.
Okay. Let me make sure, I'm sorry?
My, my take on it, Mr. Chairman, is it's like-for-like.
Okay.
So I'm fine.
I didn't hear, what did you say there?
As Mr. Dawson said, it's like-for-like. Not changing anything.
All right, I guess, go ahead, Rob.
Mr. Dawson, is there any change to the fire suppression or the lighting that is inside the canopy?
No, sir, no change to the fire suppression, no change to the downlighting at the site. I think right now, currently, it is a, the exterior of the canopy fascia is a 3D system that was the standard for ExxonMobil back in the 90s and early 2000s, that blue band lit up at night, and the mobile logo lit up at night, both internally illuminated. The new design would be a mobile canopy logo that also lights up at night internally illuminated, and would be an LED light bar that shines, turn the light down on the ACM fascia. So it, all lighting is downlit, it's more of an accent glow, so it's actually less light than currently is on site now with the 3D system.
Ernie, or Joe, do you have any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Holly, does the planning department have any comments on this?
My only comment was, the primary request of this application, as noted, is to replace the, the mobile sign on the canopy, like-for-like. The diagram does show these secondary signs, which are red, projecting out, that were, they weren't described in the application, so I'm not sure if the intent was to include those or not, but I, I'm not sure that those red signs that project out would be permissible under the bylaw, since secondary signs need to pertain to typically separate entrances, exits, that sort of thing. And they, I believe it related to a product and not directional or otherwise.
So, Mr. Dawson, the intent is to replace the canopy itself, the secondary signs, are they part of this project?
Those are synergy logos, is that the red, the red blades?
The red ones, yeah.
I'm getting my little bird back, right? The red blade signs that go over top of the dispensers. I was not informed that those were called out, that there was any issue with those. They are, they have been applied to them, they would go over top of the dispenser. It's a non-illuminated ABS plastic sign that denotes synergy between the Exxon and mobile images. If there's an issue with that, they can be removed, but they're non-illuminated, bathroom directly to the canopy column, that would be directly on top of the dispenser balance.
What, what do they say?
Synergy. About seven years ago, ExxonMobil made a determination to try to create a solid synergy between their two images, ExxonMobil, to just kind of show that they were one and the same, not two separate brands. So it says synergy fuel technology, it is final apply to red ABS plastic that is non-illuminated, no lighting at all, that attaches to the canopy column. The other red item that's below that, you see on the canopy column, is warning and safety detail apparatus, they call it a koala, looks like a little bear hanging on a tree. Looks like a little bear hanging on a tree. So that just really has your CCTV, warning details, stuff of that nature to direct the customer on the proper usage of pumps and whatnot.
Okay, so the synergy sign is just an add-on for advertisement, kind of, to Holly's?
For the ExxonMobil brand, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Holly, does that explanation change any of your analysis? Not an answer.
It doesn't. We do have a section in the bylaw about displays with product advertisements and how they need to constitute at least 25% of a store's sales to be allowable. But I think the concern about secondary signs applies regardless.
So if we were to take a vote on this, it can be a condition that that would not be included if that were to be suggested?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. So I don't know if you heard the comments, there's, there, yeah, there is a bit of an obstacle to those signs being included with this particular application, but, all right. Anybody have any questions? Joe?
Will the board make a determination on the canopy and separate that out?
Yes, that could, that...
Or what would be the...
I believe that that's quite possible. If anybody, does anybody have a motion?
Just a question for Holly.
Of course.
Would they have to come back if they wanted to add that? Is that...
Yes, if the board, I think, I think the board is able to grant relief for that with a special permit, but then that would be a public hearing.
So it's a special, so there's a separate process? So that's a special permit application just for those little signs?
Okay, so if we were to make a motion to approve excluding that synergy sign, that's what I, I would make that motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Anybody second?
Second.
Motion to second. Ready to vote, all in favor?
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie Pachekowski, aye.
Debbie Homewood, I just have one question. It's to approve the sign like-for-like, but leave the synergy out, correct?
Yes, the canopy, but the little red signs, they'd have to come back on a special permit.
Yes, aye.
Five, zero. All right, sir, you have your approval for the canopy, and, and thank you very much. Gentlemen.
Gentlemen, good, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good night.
All right, be well, thank you. Okay, the next agenda item tonight is an A&R plan, approval not required for 30 Pleasant Place. The applicant is Loretta Braverman, is division of property into two separate parcels. A&R, I don't really know how much has to be said, but does the planning department have any thoughts?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, sir, I can speak to you.
Yes, that's great.
Yep.
For the record, David Hearn Jr., 30 Walpole Street, on behalf of Loretta Braverman, the owner of the property at 30 Pleasant Place. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have before you a plan prepared by Tru Land Surveying LLC that shows a division of a piece of land known as 30 Pleasant Place that has an area of just under 51,000 square feet in total. And on that land now are two structures. One is the house numbered number 30, shown on Lot B. And there is a second building that is a two-story building that has three garage bays and also has some living quarters above it. A member of, a couple of members of Ms. Braverman's family are living there currently. It was determined that that shouldn't be going on. We went to the zoning board for permission to create lots that are not conforming. We already had one big lot that was not conforming in terms of lot width and frontage, because its only, its only frontage is 15 feet long, Pleasant Place. The zoning board agreed and granted the necessary variances to allow the creation of the lots as shown on the plan before you. So the question of the lack of frontage has been resolved, as well as the lack of lot width, because you'd be near 90 feet in that district, 90 feet frontage, 90 feet width going back to the buildings. Once you get back to the building, you've got a couple hundred feet along the different measurements. So we are here, my client has lived with that property for years. Before that, when her husband was alive, he was there. And before that, her late father-in-law had the property. And the property has been used, has had various large trucks come in and out, ambulances, fire trucks, school buses, as well as commercial trucks. So the question of access is, it's never been a problem. Then we're not creating something new. The only thing we're creating here is two lots from one. And what is shown on the plan is the 15-foot strip would be divided between the two lots, seven and a half feet, seven and a half feet. And then, at such time as Ms. Braverman conveys out one of the lots, presumably Lot A, they would be easements back and forth for the use of that 15-foot strip by both properties. So that's all we're looking for, so that we can now take these and make conveyance at some point, whether it's to a member of the family or to somebody else, as we're looking for. Your endorsement on it.
Thank you.
We've conquered the zoning issues.
Great. Any, Derek, Rob, any questions in here?
Gentlemen, Joe, ready?
No, that was, I mean, that was my question, because I'm getting my boards confused, because I thought it was, you were before us for adequate access, where it was ZBA. And so that's all...
We gotta get the lots approved by ZBA to present a lot that otherwise doesn't have the normal frontage. But it's had access for years.
15-foot frontage.
I am told that there was, in the past, there were trucks that probably didn't belong there, commercial trucks. But my client, in her number of years of living there, has had, they've got fire trucks in there, they've got the ambulance in there, they've had, I think the school buses have gone in there. And, you know, there's been no problem. When this is, it's laid out with somewhat of a circle now, serving the areas. And, but that second building is not legal. And let's only more agree that we could create a second lot, make it legal, for subject to you folks signing off on the actual lot.
That's right.
Just, I don't want to be the guy dragging the trash barrel down that.
Yeah, well, somebody's been doing it.
I'm good, I'm fine, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Debbie, you're on there, do you have any questions?
Yes, I, it was, in front, I listed the ZBA on this, and as much as I'm opposed to pork chop lots, I think this one, there's nothing else they can do with it. I, for access and for, it'll, it'll go with the, what, at the registry that will have common access through that driveway? And it'll be registered with the property, is that correct, Mr. Hearn?
That's correct. And, Mr. Chairman, at such time as, I mean, right now, Ms. Braverman owns the entire piece of property. But at such time as she conveys out one, or maybe someday the second of the lots, the deed would include easement language by which the lot she holds on to would have the right to continue to use that portion of that 15-foot strip that is being conveyed away. And whoever is acquiring Lot A, we consider the new lot, would have the right to use her, Ms. Braverman's half of the 15-foot. So there'd be an agreement among property owners, it's not actually uncommon. There are common driveways in this town, and in many towns. And those are handled by easements that are recorded with the deeds, in the registry of deeds, they become permanent, and they're binding on all subsequent owners.
Thank you.
And we're, are we increasing nonconformity or not, except for frontage? Is that correct? Because they're larger than up lots?
The lots are much larger than required. They're, it's a, it's a single residence district, 10,000 square feet is required. The smaller of the two lots is almost 22,000 square feet.
So could they break these lots into, since they're 21 and 28, almost 29, could they break them again and make them four lots?
Not without zoning board approval, and ultimately approval by this board. And in order to, I would not want to bet that that would be approved. It was hard enough to get this approved through the zoning board.
Okay, again, to my point is, these people have lived there for a long, long time, but everybody's not always going to live in the same lots. And so I, I belabor, I get it. But in order to keep people from having to fight with each other, as long as we're succinct with the access is for both those lots, and it'll be registered at the registry of deeds, that's my only question.
Is there a motion with regard to this application?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, let's start with you.
Rob Amber, aye. Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie Pachekowski, aye.
Debbie Homewood, yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Are you on this one too, Mr. Hearn?
Yeah.
All right, so, there's another A&R plan, and this is an approval. So the next item agenda this evening is an approval not required A&R plan for 220 to 226 Napont Street, Jeffrey Roberts trustee of 226 Napont Street Realty Trust, and Karen Bach Clemmie, represented by attorney David Hearn. This regards the division of two existing lots into four lots, with two of the newly created non-buildable lots to be added to the adjacent Honda dealership.
That's right. Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, David Hearn Jr., 30 Walpole Street, on behalf of the current property owners. This is a matter that actually came before the board's backs in 2001. And in July of 2001, the board signed an A&R plan that did what we're trying to do tonight. Unfortunately, nobody can, it appears the bylaw never got recorded in the registry of deeds. Nobody can find it. We've checked with the office of the attorney that had handled it at the time, and they can't find it. The attorney who handled it is deceased. But, and in fact, on the idea that this had been approved, the areas shown as lots 15A and 14A on the plan before you have been dedicated since 2001 to use by the Honda dealership. And that went through site plan review with this board in 2001. So what we're trying to do now is to put into effect what was actually approved back in 2001 by the planning board, so that we can make conveyances. There's a closing pending for 220 Napont Street, Lot 14 on the plan. And we're trying to sell what is shown there as Lot 14, even though the deed into Ms. Clemmie was a deed of the former, what was formerly on record, which goes back and was a combination of 14A and 14. We're only selling Lot 14. And then we'll be, I think at some point, there'll be a sale of Lot 15 also. Another member of the family controls that. So, Mr. Roberts, as trustee for the benefit of somebody else in the family. So we're trying to put on paper what the reality is. And I have a copy of the plan. Mr. Clemmie, who's here tonight, dug out a copy of the plan that was used at the time of the site plan modification for the Honda facility. And that plan is dated March 2001, so it probably came before the board, roughly the same time this was going on. So this time, we're not gonna, we're gonna get that bylaw recorded possibly as early as tomorrow, if we're able to, if you approve.
All right, excuse me. Questions, anybody here, please, feel free. Joe?
Just a question, I, I think I barely remember this, and we...
Your signature is on it.
And that's why I...
How could you forget?
He remembers every case.
It's not like the Constitution, you know, Declaration of Independence, you'd remember that. That, and there's a buffer there. I do recall that was just to...
Yep.
And who actually owns that? Who owns the buffer part?
Well, it's now within the same ownership, but it will be, the buffer easement on that plan you have is on both sides of the dividing line. It's intended, and Mr. Clemmie could probably speak to this, but as I understand it, there are trees growing along what everybody understood was going to be the boundary line. So that if you're up in Napont Street, you don't have the view of the cars on the Honda, on the Honda lot. And so it's already there, it's already grown in, it's been growing for 20-odd years. And the plan that, when this was approved, the site review, there was a 40-foot wide buffer easement in back of these lots and the other lots that were developed along Napont Street at the time. You may recall, Mr. Sheehan, that the, when Honda and Toyota were being built, there was an agreement and a requirement that Mr. Bach Senior, who controlled that land up there, sell that off to some unrelated developer. And there were 10 or so houses built from those lots. These lots we're dealing with now already had houses, have been there for a long time, but those were part of the Simoni property. And in fact, I, I ended up getting hired by those developers when they came to town and bought the land from Mr. Bach Senior and handled the sales for them as they built the houses and sold them over the next couple of years. So in that plan, which I have, I'm happy to show it to you, this is the site plan. This is the, not a hip copy, we have more, people want them, Mr. Clemmie brought several, but you can see there's this buffer along here. And these are the lots we're dealing with over here. This is the 2001 plan, and there's your signature in there.
Well, those people who signed it way back when must have been very forward-thinking, don't you think?
They were, they were. And if we only could find the bylaw, we wouldn't be taking your time with this tonight. But nobody could find it. And I couldn't find it or record it.
Somewhere away for Joe to see.
Well, I'll...
All right, looking for a motion? Yeah, is anybody, any questions, or are we ready to take a motion?
One quick question?
Mm-hmm, yes, Debbie?
Mr. Hearn, is anything changing from the 2001 decision to this, today's decision?
The plan is the same, and actually, Jim Toomey drew the plan. He was working for his father's company, Toomey Munson, that had done the 2001 plan. In fact, he told me, when I called him about this, that, a couple of things. One was that he had the old files from Toomey Munson, so it made his work easier. He still had to go out and confirm things. The other is, he remembered from 2001 as a young man, younger man, going out and doing some of the fieldwork for his father's company. So he's drawn the same plan, updated it, and he has to certify to it, which he's done.
Okay, and has anything changed on the two lots that aren't built on? Of all the things we've changed with setbacks and buffers, were they a butt thing that have changed in our rules about what they can do with frontage or anything there?
If you're referring to, if you're referring to the two lots, 15A and 14A, that are noted to be not buildable lots, no, those have been incorporated in the Honda operation for 20 years.
Yeah.
And they were approved when the site plan review, site plan modification was done in 2001. So they're already, they've been used 20-plus years for automobile storage.
Okay.
Motion to approve? Anybody a second?
Sorry.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Ernie Pachekowski, aye.
Debbie Homewood, yes.
All right, thank you.
Mike, is the road still there from Napont Street? Remember the old road that went right down the hill?
It used to be there, it's not there.
It's not there anymore? I'm going back to...
All the trees, they get the solid fence, you can't get through it.
Yeah, remember the old, the old, what's up?
It used to be, it used to be the cut through.
The cut through, that, Simonis, that, and the eastern, right?
That was one of the conditions.
Was to shut that off?
Segregate the...
I mean, you couldn't use it, it was a private road.
From the residential.
You remember, once we got approval from, in front of this board years ago, that was one of the conditions, shut that off.
Shut that off, yeah.
Put up a solid fence and put all the trees there. And it's, they're 20 years, they're all grown up.
Yeah.
God rest Mr. Hill, and he just, he was a great...
Took a whiff of Louis' grave, that's it. He was a good lawyer.
All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is...
Can I just say one more?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the one that I hope you'll all sign before you leave tonight, because I've got a closing in two days. And I hope to record it tomorrow morning.
So nobody take it home with them?
No, take it home.
Two honors, two sign-ups, pictures to take.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
It's school, it's school picture.
Want me to hold the camera up, you stand in front of the screen with Debbie?
Yes.
Yep. Like, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yes.
Somebody said photo shopping. Mr. Chairman, you've got the next matter to announce, I'm sorry.
No, I don't mean to...
I'm here on the next one.
Please, in the meeting, but I think you're involved with this one too. All right, so the next agenda item this evening is a continued public hearing, major project special permanent, excuse me, major project special permanent, 83 Moore Street, Norwood Space Center, construction of a 146-unit multifamily dwelling. This matter is continued from what was last heard on January 22nd, 2024. Attorney Hearn is representing... Attorney Hearn is representing the...
Thank you, again, David Hearn Jr., Lawrence Cabral at thirty Walpole Street, on behalf of eighty-three Moore Street LLC, which is the record owner of the property of eighty-three Moore Street, commonly known as the Norwood Space Center. And what's before you is continued hearing, and I don't think we actually were here in January, we kicked this over from perhaps November, because there were questions raised, we were asked to make revisions.
There may be a mistake in there, I apologize.
I'm pretty good at writing continuous letters. But, in any event, since we were last with you and providing testimony to you, we've had discussions with the various town officials, planning department, building department, the fire department, DPW, and various questions came up. They were, I think, all resolved to the satisfaction of the various departments. I think we've received some memos over the last few days. I have provided copies from the planning department about some of the issues that came up, and our team, some of whom are with us tonight, and I'll introduce them in a second, worked with different departments. For the record, Rob Simmons, who's director of development for Cathardis, which is one of the partners in the development team, Rob is here, we have Neil Hanson of Tyon Bond, our engineers, the fellow in the back there, and Dan Riggs of Embach, which is our architecture firm, is here also. So, I'm not, I don't have a lot to say other than, we think we've worked out all the questions that had been put before us, that had come up. Fire department wanted some revisions in the parking area. I've given you a memo this evening, a narrative. I know that Ms. Dixon had asked that we put in writing somewhere the commitment for twenty percent affordable, that is in there, in that, and I also, and the only other substantive change, I believe, in the, in terms of what I've written up compared to what you've heard already, was that we've lost, I think, seven parking spaces in making the changes that the fire department wanted. The original lanes in the parking area were designed to conform to the books that our engineers all rely on, but the fire department wanted a little bit more space, and so in doing that, we had to cut parking back a little bit. We still think there's plenty of parking, because this is a big site, and we've talked before about how the parking, some of it's used during the day by people who work there, or the customers of the businesses, some of those spaces will become available at night. We have eighty-odd spaces will be under the building. We've also responded to the concerns expressed under the code for the EV-ready spaces and all that, but I'll leave that to the technical people to explain, and I think Dan has a presentation for us about the revisions to some of the design elements of the building. So, leave that, and I'll put him in.
Thank you, David. And I think we have a visual, some visual material that we can use to go through this as well. Excellent, thank you, you can go ahead too, I think the very... So, the material I'll take you through will be primarily focused on the aesthetics and the architectural design of the project, but, just as David mentioned, we went through a myriad number of comments with planning, DPW, and fire, especially, and really appreciate that opportunity to continue improving the project, collaborate with you all. So, some of those are represented here on this plan. Coordinating fire panel locations and then unseated locations, electrical rooms, sprinkler rooms, and all of that, if you go to the next slide. We also took the measure, not required by code, but requested by fire, to take the stair all the way up to the roof, so we're happy to do that. And go to the next page, so, I'll take you on a quick, kind of before and after of some of the visuals of the project. So last time we were in front of this board, really what we, we heard was the, the project looked, it was a little dark, needed some more detail, loved to see more brick. It could be warmer, have more nuance, become a little bit more welcoming, and have some more vertical proportions that are maybe more akin to what you can see in typical residential development. So with that, we, we worked on the project, we didn't really deviate from the path we were on before, but continued to develop that. So if you go to the next slide, Holly. We're really proud of where we've arrived in the design, and continue to add nuance and detail, lighten some of the materials up, and really kind of dive into creating more nuance within the aesthetic of the building. And we'll get a little closer to it in the next few slides, so it's a little easier to tell. So again, before, this is the main entry, a lot of horizontal lines, not a lot of detail, not really marking the window locations and things like that, and also you saw the flat panel of the building entry. So if you go to the next slide following this, we've introduced quite a bit of brick on the facade, and bringing that up vertically, and especially this kind of most important areas. So here, we're using that brick to really demarcate where the entrance of the building is, and putting a lot more detail into the paneling around the windows, and really breaking down the scale of the facade, using texture and some of those detailing moves. And we think it's a much more handsome design because of that. If you go to the next slide, again, so this is sort of looking at the first corner of the building that you see as you approach from Moore Street, and you can go to the next slide again. So some of the things we've done is we increased the frequency of those pitch moves on the roof, so they happen more, more frequently, and it brings a little bit more of that variation that they're creating on the facade. We've also introduced quite a bit of a warmer panel material, especially at the corner there where it wraps around, and lightened the building generally, so we appreciate those comments that we heard, and we took that to heart, and continued to develop the building design. Still marrying it to the kind of industrial aesthetic of the space center. It's not your typical place in, in town, it's really special and unique, and we wanted to echo that within our project design. Keep going. So, again, the view from the, from the river back towards the building, and continuing to add character to that, if you go to the next slide. So here you can really see that lighter material, the addition of trim, and paying much more closer attention to the detail of, you know, all of those architectural elements within the building. Again, so just pointing in on what those are, brick, we increased the area of brick substantially around the building. Still using corrugated metal, I think, but paying a lot, a lot closer attention to how those sort of seams and joints are made, and make sure it has a lot of that kind of residential kind of scale feel to the material, the way we're using it. Fiber cement board and batten make up other areas of the building within that, and help to continue some of that finstration language. Using a square channel high-density fiber cement material helps to create shadow line and texture around the building. And then some of the large format panel that we're introducing as a warmer color to the building, using that kind of frequently around the building and creating variation by using those different materials in different areas. So, we'll do a kind of quick walk around the elevations, going counterclockwise around the building, so, starting at the west, again, that main entry with the much more expansive area of brick, going all the way up to the top of the building. And you can see some variation that we're creating with the texture around the building as you, as you circle around it, so, if you keep scrolling, probably look at the next page here, the two ends of the building. So again, creating a little variation between these different sections, and the frequency, again, of those pitches, kind of breaking the building down into smaller segments. And we keep going. Again, east elevation, so it's more of that same technique as you go around the building, go to the next slide. Again, so the area on the rear, we have the two communicating entrances that take you from the front entrance to the rear of the building where we have our main amenity spaces and that connection back to the river. So we also use the brick at that area of the building as well to create that connection. Again, increase the amount of brick that we're, that we're showing throughout the facade. Take to the last one. That's really it for the architectural portion of the presentation, again, we have our whole team here, so happy to answer any technical questions or any other questions you have. Thank you.
Good evening, Neil Hanson with Tyon Bond. So, I'm just gonna briefly kind of go through some of the changes that we made on the site layout in stormwater and destruction side of the project. David and Dan touched on kind of the bigger, the bigger points. Site plan, we spent a lot of time going back and forth with the fire department, and I think we discussed that the, the last time we were in front of, in front of this board, of best play between giving the fire department everything they were looking for, and the landscape requirements within the bylaws, and the sort of visual aesthetic we wanted from the front of this building. So we were able to get through that and get to the point where everyone was satisfied with the design from a site layout standpoint. The other big piece that we spent a lot of time on was the stormwater management plan. We had a number of comments from the planning department and the town engineer related to our stormwater plan. We've worked through those details to refine that, provide additional details, some additional documentation. There is one in the staff, my mother's one suggested condition of approval related to the stormwater design, and we have no issues with, with the way that is written, we can, we can address that condition. And I, one last thing I'll just touch on is, that was a large part of the discussion, I believe, at the last meeting, and then also with, with town staff, was related to infiltration on site. And included in the revised plan set, we had the information from the old borings that were done, I believe, back in twenty sixteen, that basically showed the groundwater elevation across the site is anywhere between three and five feet below grade, which is the sort of prohibiting factor in, in providing infiltration on, on site for any need of stormwater management. So that's, that's really the big changes, there's a few other minor changes with utilities and that sort of thing. Nothing that, that majorly impacts the design, but happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
Joe?
Just when you, on, on the fire department, and you had to remove some parking spaces so they could get around. And now, they're gonna be able to get around the whole building, or is that what they need, or? Or can you show us, is there a slide that you could show us how that, that works?
Yeah, so we had, as a separate exhibit, not, it was not within the main, but we did provide turning templates for that fire truck. So the, the fire truck can come in, the main entrance of the site, loop around to the front of the building, and then it can access the, the parking lot on the opposite side of the river. But it's really just the front and the, the side between the rear of the storage building that they, that they can have access to for the truck.
So I can see where it comes in, and kind of in the front of the building, and then around.
So they have access to three sides of the building, they don't have access to one on the river.
They could get into here.
But they were happy with it.
They just don't have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they, they can come in, and actually, one other thing that they had a question to do was basically make it the one way for all traffic through the site, so that's their main route, access the entire front of the building. They can come down here, they would have to, you know, reverse to get out, and then they have access across the bridge here to the side. Likely, they wouldn't be going back there to access the building, it would just be the two short ends and then the main front face of the building.
And then the other change that was added at the request of the fire department was striping along the front of the building at the entrance, so that if an ambulance needs to access the building, or that kind of situation, that space will be open.
Like a fire lane, kind of a thing.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, basically, the front piece of the building where there's no head-in parking is, will now be striped as a fire lane.
I was just curious how much of the building they could get around the whole building? It just, it's...
Three sides.
Three sides.
Yep.
And they, and they can do that, they, they're happy with it.
Yes.
And, and the building is gonna be sprinkled, and will have fire department connections on, on every floor.
Yeah, as well as fire department connection on the outside of the building, and we've worked through those locations with them to their satisfaction, yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
I have a, sorry.
Oh, is it Rob?
Sorry, I'm just a little behind. The stormwater management, the infiltration basin, is there a question about design, is it not being designed now? Are we figuring it out on the fly, are you looking for an approval without a design?
No, so there, that, the infiltration basin is, that's, that went away as part of this recent mission. We cannot infiltrate on site, the groundwater is too high. And that's why, at the request of the, of the town engineer, we included those boring logs in the plan set that, that shows the borings that were done, where they were done, and what the groundwater elevation in each location is.
So, so the below-ground tank that was shown on the initial plans of metal is still there, but it's been clarified that it's not going to be used for infiltration. Do you want to talk about some of the other changes to stormwater that were made on the plan?
Yeah, so, I, I guess what you're, what you're referring to is they, if you could go to the drainage sheet too, that would be helpful.
You know...
I think it's the other direction.
Okay.
So there's a large...
The best one was honestly in the stormwater plan, that should be the location that's in the M P's.
It's C one oh three, so yeah. So there, there's a large subsurface detention system, precast concrete chambers. That system can be designed as either an infiltration or detention system, and that, that our original design contemplated potentially using that as infiltration if the site allowed. With this boring information and the groundwater table known now, we know that we can't, so we have included in this, in this plan set that that system will be a closed bottom, concrete chambers, it's just to detain and attenuate peak flows from the site. So the runoff that will enter that system will primarily be from that main parking field in front of, or I guess between the existing building and the new residential building. Catch basins are offline, they'll deep some soils, oil water separator hoods. Stormwater will then flow into that detention system. There's outlet control on that, which will slowly release the water downstream. There's an existing water quality unit on the site, which was constructed in twenty sixteen, that's located right here. So the water will flow out of the detention system and then into the existing stormwater system, which flows through that water quality unit before discharging to that existing swell along the storage center. The primary reason for the detention system is to make sure we're not overloading that water quality unit as it was originally designed. So that takes care of most of the, the front parking area. This secondary parking lot, we have tree box filters that are the primary source of stormwater treatment for that rear parking lot. Water flows into the system, it's a tree and a precast concrete box, has a filter be in it, the water flows through it, and then gets discharged from there after being treated through that system. The other change is on the back half of the site here, the original design had a tree box filter back here as well. The design there was modified based on a comment we got from the conservation commission related to compensatory flood storage on the site. Our original submission to the conservation commission had looked at the flood storage volume on the site holistically. The comment we got was that they want us to break it out at one foot increments throughout the site, and by doing that, we realized we had to drop the rear of the site here to get that, that flood storage back on the site. So that allowed us to regrade the site and have a bio swell along the back of the property line there to replace the tree box filter. The inlet for that swell is a, what's called a rain guardian turret. It's a proprietary inlet system that acts similar to a deep pump catch basin, sediment removal, oil water separation, before it flows out into the swell. So that, I think they've got everything. I think that's, that's everything on the stormwater side.
Thank you, that was very, very... Debbie?
Can I ask Sarah or Holly, are we using Etratech on this at all, or no?
No, this hasn't been peer reviewed, it's been reviewed by the town engineer, as well as other department staff.
Okay. And are we going to address things like, so everything's kind of staying the same, you know, I'm going back to the green space and all that from our, way back in September? Or further? Nothing, none of that has changed, just the questions from the fire department and Concon?
So, pursuant to some of the, sorry, let me share my screen, Debbie, I realize I'm not doing that. Pursuant to the, the fire department's concerns about turning radius, some of the, the perking islands have been reduced in size, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so, initially, we... Yeah, so initially, we were, can you go up one more page to the site plan?
Bottom line is, we lost green space for the fire truck. Is that where we're getting at?
We lost a little bit. So on the site plan, our initial plan had 24-foot drive aisles through the entire rear of the site. The bylaw calls for 26, so we've been asking for relief on that, which was similar relief that was granted back in 2016 and then first round of site permanent capture for the site. So we ended up increasing those back to 26, so we shrunk the long landscape islands that are, that are straight in the site, sort of in parallel with the building, to pick up. So it was six feet in total between the two islands. The other thing the fire department had asked before was they didn't want these hammerhead landscape islands. We were able to keep those by, so we lost two parking spaces on each end by just shifting the entire island over, where nine feet, the width of the parking spot, and then striping the difference. So we did lose some green space, but we were able to keep the majority of what the fire department was looking for us to remove.
So we made the aisle, we made the aisles bigger, closest to the building, but what about the other two? Do we leave those? Because we gave you relief on the aisle width, correct?
No, we no longer need the relief on the aisle width because we increased the aisles to the 26 feet requiring the bylaw.
On all the aisles?
All of the redeveloped aisles, yes, or drive aisles, yes. The ones in the front of the site that we are not touching will remain as they were previously approved.
So the bottom line is, the islands were somewhat reduced in size, Debbie, but not as much as the fire department wanted because we were able to move them in by giving up a few parking spaces rather than just eliminating them.
Right, and that was, that was the balance that I talked about of trying to find that intermediate point where we were keeping the green space that I think, you know, the development team wanted, I think a large majority of the planning board wanted, not all the planning board wanted, but then making the fire department satisfied that they'll be able to adequately service this building if the needs arise.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think we satisfied...
Holly, were there any, I mean, the fire department was the real big one, and I don't think anything else has been, we had no other really issues with the project. We've got the note on the 20% affordable, so we're locked in there. I would have liked 25, but we've got 20, I understand. I like the way the building's looking.
Yep.
I think it's, it's, no balconies though, right? We said no...
No balconies.
No balconies in this one, okay.
I think this remains an open public hearing though, so...
Yeah, I, I like it. I think, and I'm confident they'll do a good job down there. They've done one so far, and I don't see them not doing one on this one.
Great. Any input on your end, no?
No, I have some suggested conditions for the board to vote to approve tonight, but I actually won't name them all, but...
All right, let's take a look. Being that it's a public hearing, is there anybody that wishes to comment on this here or online?
I had a question, but it got answered in the process.
You all set? Great. Nope, there it is.
So the comment from Mark Ryan regarding the low bridge warning system, is that being implemented, or what's...
I, I can give some insight into that. I talked to our assistant town manager, Mike Rosen, about trying to track down where that comment came from, and what I learned is that in 2022, the Traffic Safety Commission reported, gave a report from TETRA-Tech that was a study to make suggestions for how to improve traffic at that railroad bridge. They provided that report to the Board of Selectmen at the Board of Selectmen's meeting in April of 2022. They received the report, and the motion was made to send a memo to the planning board to include one of the suggested, one of the suggested solutions to this truck problem as a condition of approval of this project. Now, it's possible that the Board of Selectmen did create that memo and maybe sent it to Paul, but I think it maybe just stopped there. It's the recommendation of myself and Sarah that that not be included as a condition of approval because conditions of approval typically are related to impacts of the project, and since this is primarily a residential project, it's unlikely that it would be generating a lot of routine truck traffic, except perhaps during construction, that would be impacting that bridge. Additionally, we don't know if the bridge is going to go back, or at what height it will go back. So it seems as though now may not be the time to make a decision about that. As part of that Board of Selectmen vote, Selectmen, well, Bob, Bob Donnelly, did note that if the, the planning board chose not to include it as a condition of approval, that putting it on the capital plan, which was the original intent, would, would still be available to the town as an option.
Great. Interesting. We don't own it, but we're going to put it on the capital plan?
Not, not repairing the bridge, but putting something in front of the bridge to warn trucks.
Safety, safety issues.
It's on, it's on the road.
That warning's been great, hasn't it? I'm kidding. That was a joke.
Yeah.
Solve the problem. Zip right through there.
Indirectly, you could drive a 50-foot truck. All right, so is there anything further on the terms of comments or questions?
When they do have a problem, is it coming down the hill that they tend to hit?
Yeah.
Down the hill? No, it's, it's both ways.
Both ways?
More, I've seen more up.
It's an equal opportunity bridge.
Yeah.
Well, there's been a problem state removed the bridge.
And the truck that hit it, that caused the recent damage, had nothing to do with us.
Right.
It was a concrete truck. It may have been in attention involved, and somebody hit it. The proposal that Mr. Ryan has referred to was, I think, chains hanging down that will hit a vehicle to try to wake up the driver to stop or do something different.
Oh, okay.
And we don't want it, we don't want to pay for it, we don't think it's a good idea. And I don't think anybody's pushing it, really.
No, not at this point.
Now that the bridge is gone, I think the preferred option of the town is that either it remain gone or that it be built higher.
Or the road lower?
Can't go, can't put that road any lower, it'd be swimming. Anyway, it's not, it's not on their property, it's not, we're not going to make a condition.
All right.
What are your, what are your conditions, Holly?
So...
I have a memo from Friday or Tuesday.
Yes, yes. So the first condition was a narrative documenting compliance with the requirements of a local initiative program. I haven't read the narrative provided by attorney Hearn yet tonight, but it may be that will satisfy that condition. And that, going along with that, that the affordable units be proportionately distributed throughout the different types of apartments with the different sizes of segments, which is part of, part of the requirements of state law. Then I have that stormwater suggested condition that there be filtration media in front of the proposed, oh, no, filtration media underneath the proposed bio swell, so the bio swell detail was shown with compacted subgrade. So the question is to allow it to filter, to allow for better treatment of stormwater, and that pretreatment be provided to separate oil and gas, both before the bio swell and in the full parking lot. And there's, there's a list that the state has of acceptable best practices to do so, so just picking from that list, and that they provide a plan showing that to the community development director and have it approved by Ms. Dixon and Mark Ryan prior to receiving a building permit. And then that we receive a stamp certification that lighting was installed, a prior plan and in compliance of the bylaw, prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy, and that light will not exceed 20 feet. That the pedestrian access path along the Ponset River be available to the public for passive recreation. This mirrors the special permit condition that the board used with the Boston Skating Club. And then finally, that the board receive a letter from a certified landscape architect, a consultation of the project, to confirm that the landscaping has been implemented in accordance with the site plans.
Mr. Hearn?
If I could make two points on that.
Sure.
The memo referred to 467 spaces, but I think by the time we get done with the fire department, we're done, we believe the number is 460 spaces. So it's, I mean, if you applied all the rules, there's still short spaces, but we must, we've discussed on this occasion, and others, we don't really need, we don't think we need them. The other point is, the memo refers to the LIP program, but we're not operating under the LIP program. This is not a, this is not a, a project that you're coming, going to the selectmen, going to the Commonwealth, coming back to the local board as a comprehensive permit. This is a, a project that is provided for specifically under section 9.8 of our bylaws, of the zoning bylaws. So I'm concerned that the reference to the LIP program, if that stays in the, it could cause us a problem, all of us, both the planning department and the developer, a problem if it becomes a condition. This is not, I mean, Rob's got a great deal of experience on affordable housing issues, but the LIP program requires you go to the local, the executive body of the town, the selectman, for approval of a project, of the concept of the project. You go to the Commonwealth, and they've got to review the project, and you've got to be eligible. They often come out and do an appraisal, then they give you a project eligibility letter, and then you go back to zoning board under comprehensive permit, and that's what the LIP program is. We're not doing that. We don't need to do that because this is authorized under section 9.8. It was written, so this makes you so the district. So I want to make sure we're in agreement on that, that, because I'd hate to find out that you approve something, and then the staff says, well, where's your LIP stuff? Your documentation on LIP and all that? It isn't a LIP project. I mean, the LIP, example of a LIP project, I'm doing one now with the zoning board at 1223 Washington Street, and we went through all those hoops. Go to the selectmen, present the project, get their approval, then go to Commonwealth, then come back to ultimately to the zoning board. Straight forward to B. This is affordable housing that will be conditioned. We've committed to it in writing, and it is part of what we're asking you to approve, and it's a condition of the bylaw itself. So that's, I just want to make that clear. And Holly, and I know it's in that memo, but I think it...
Yep.
It's not really one of those.
So I, maybe it could, that condition could be modified to read that a narrative is provided to document compliance of the affordable housing requirements of the Norwood zoning bylaw, including marketing and so forth.
Yep. He's done a lot of that.
Yeah, I was going to say, we can, you know, it'll be a deed restriction, there'll be a unit designation plan, and there'll be an affirmative marketing plan that we put together. We'll do all that.
And we have to satisfy the people in town, too, on, you know, the affordable housing folks in town, as well as you folks about all that. So he knows what to do, and we don't mind that condition. I just was concerned about the reference to capital L, LIP program.
All right, so that's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, are, through you, Attorney Hearn, the other conditions, okay? Everything's fine?
Yeah.
We'll make the change to number one and the other ones, okay, thank you.
Right, but this is exactly what we've been working toward with the boards and the staff and everything.
All right, all that having been said, if there's no comments online or in the room? All right, is there a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion is second.
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Heskey, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Freddie Petchakowski, aye.
Can I ask a question after we say aye?
Sure.
I, I suggest you ask the question before you close the public hearing, once to...
Thank you.
...applicants.
Just, I'm just in the spirit of consistency, because I've elaborated the point on parking before on the housing units. This is not, in my opinion, the same situation with, my phone has already beeped that I'm getting questions about why aren't I not being consistent with parking? This, these units are not surrounded completely by neighborhoods. One neighborhood coming down the road, but it's not completely surrounded by neighborhoods, which I, why I'm not complaining about losing seven parking spots. And I just want to record that I, Mr. Dupree has done what we've asked him to do through all of these progress, the whole process of the space center, and we haven't had to go back and complain when we asked him to put up a fence or move the dumpster or, so I feel comfortable with what we're doing here. Good housekeeping is just going to be in the, it's kind of the overlay plan, Holly? While we do construction?
Yeah, we'll include all of our general conditions, like good housekeeping and not starting construction before 7:00 a.m. and those sorts of things as well. Those are the conditions that I...
Okay, just for my own, do we have a start date, or we just have to wait until 30-day appeal and all that good stuff?
Mr. Chairman, this decision will be subject to the usual 20-day appeal period from when the decision is filed with the town clerk. Beyond that, we do not, at this point, have a start date for construction. When that time comes, you know, there'll be permit applications galore with the building department and DPW and everybody else that's concerned. We're still working with the conservation commission. We go back to the conservation commission on March 20th to, for continued hearing on this matter. So, you know, by the time we have a final decision, assuming we get favorable decisions and appeal period run, runs, the appeal periods run, the, we're talking end of April, sometime in May, before everything is right, and then it's a question of timing for the development. So I don't know. We'll let you know.
All right. Just be in, that's it. So now can I vote aye for closing the hearing?
You're voting aye? Your vote on the motion to close the public hearing is what, Debbie?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye, Debbie O'Malley. All right, all set? So is there any further motions?
I think everyone else still needs to vote.
We did, but we can...
We did.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, I believe we did, so it was a roll call, and I think Debbie was the last one. Okay, are there any further motions regarding the application?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the project with the conditions stated earlier with the changes made to the first condition to eliminate the LIP program and just reword that, and then the other five conditions that Holly laid out.
Prepare to vote. Any questions? All right, second. Roll, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, this is a motion to second.
Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Houshy, aye.
Josian, aye.
Bernie Petchakowski, aye.
Debbie Homewood, yes.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman. So I believe that concludes our business this evening. Is there anything else from Holly, or I think Sarah's off?
We have a motion to adjourn on the ANRs and picture data.
Ah, so we're gonna sign, hold on, let's not sign the, you know. All right, so is there a motion to adjourn?
We should, we should do pictures some night when we get Holly and Sarah and everybody.
The only thing is the, the annual report is due March 1st, so that's why we wanted to edit today.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have, I have a question.
Hold on, Debbie's got a question. Yes?
Sorry, sorry, a, a statement. I appreciate your all tolerating my being on Zoom. I know it's annoying, but I appreciate your patience with that. And, right, scratching his head. And that's it, except how do I sign the Mylar, Mylar over this thing?
You can't, if you're back in town anytime soon, then you can come by the office and sign it, but it should be fine with the four signatures.
Can I, can I give you power of attorney or something if you can...
Debbie, stay on the line and I'll take a picture with you.
All right.
Oh, God.
So...
Why would I give you a picture?
For the annual report.
For the book.
For the post office.
Did we do a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
So there was a motion to second, or was there?
There was a second.
Okay, did we take a roll?
No, you gotta take a vote.
Okay. Rob Amber, aye.
Brian Houshy, aye. Josian, aye.
Bernie, Petchakowski, aye.
Debbie Homewood, yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.